Vice Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the religious stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Okay, um, thank you all for coming on this beautiful summer day. Um, we will call the name George. This would be the regular meeting of our August, August thirteenth called order at 7:00 PM. First thing they have is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Um, the one thing on here that could be scratched under items if possible discussion or board action number six preschool rental agreement has been signed and approved with those terms.
Okay, so we can remove that. Anything else? Okay, without I entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second? Probably move a second that we approve the agenda, all favor, please say aye.
Can I get you the chance, how was supposed to do that before?
Yeah. No, did you want to have some?
Um, we had a question. I'm quite certain, not, well, definitely just like, I'm quite certain. I don't mind any of that.
Which music do you have? Okay, well, let's add that then to, um, I have a school that you have. Um, okay, so, Dean, you don't remember it, approval now? Okay, so let's add that, um, is it not where we added? Let's just add it after one second. And we can probably talk about what the situation is about too. Okay, any, any more additions? Okay, if there are no more additions, all favor of the agenda, approval of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right, then, there was nobody, somebody once, um, issue off? Nobody spoke, signed up? Okay, well, that'll be when we get the second sign, people will understand more, uh, if they want to be added to that, to help us now, we'll talk more about that on your, um, we are reading here. Okay, is there a motion for consent agenda? Is there a second? Probably move a second that we've, that we moved consent agenda and, and, um, approve one, two, and three, all items in one, all items in two, and all items in three. Any discussion? Any, do you think what moved?
Hey, I was like, you know, like the type one first.
Okay, so the bill will be pulled off? Anything else? Okay, so then we will, a vote on consent agenda, everything under one, second reading of those six policies, and approving of all board meetings. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor of consent agenda, please say aye. Okay, motion passes. Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, um, let's have a motion to approve the bills. Okay, Vanessa moved, there's a second. Okay, probably move second to the bills, and now we'll ask questions.
Um, each thirteen, there's a new vision. Um, that one, I was just curious moving on, what they, cause I, um, okay.
What was that price on it? Was it forty-nine hundred?
Yeah.
So that's our upgrading camera systems and, um, I don't know too much about the work they did. I just know that that was a grant, so that we paid, you probably saw on the last meeting then, we paid forty-nine hundred twice to them, and then they reimbursed us, so we didn't spend anything. It was a grant that we got for upgrading camera systems, Robbie talked about it before he left, but we didn't spend any money on that.
It's eleven, it's nothing to do with the, we do only grades. That's home, none of that much like, yeah, I don't probably.
That's the working on that. Yeah, that was totally true.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on the bills? Okay?
I'm pleased, and I'm, uh, double.
Yep.
Let me straighten up. Doesn't, or not?
Nope. It's just us.
Do they have something similar? Or not?
I hope it has.
They don't have Huddle, they have NFHS.
NFHS. Oh, so this is part of our, yeah.
Yeah. Correctly, if I'm, yeah, sorry, correctly if I'm wrong, like the last year or the year previous, when I was in Pheasant, we had talked about the possibility of adding a Huddle camera in Pheasant, whereas Pheasant would cover that expense, but it would all be part of the system encompassing Harvey Wells County, and it just never kind of took it off.
And Huddle is, it's, it's bad deal. There's some opportunities we're going to be looking at here as soon as school starts up, on what we can do with, uh, according to this kind of, you know, like that. And what we can do to go out and sell subscriptions, and so people can actually watch that. But the other schools our size are paid, are getting subscriptions, are getting more money than Huddle costs. I, I can't, I can't believe it, but they're telling us, I mean, I hate people going back to these people to get this, knowing that they're telling us that this thing is advertising good, but unfortunately, Huddle has done such a good job to the coaches and everybody, and that is all, everybody in the state is using it, and it's a ridiculous price.
Because of that one, you get people, isn't it, if you're, you're not the most.
Right. Well, and, and with, with the Huddle, what happens is you hit a certain amount of activities, and then it used to be at the restaurant included, we'd have, yeah, other pieces that we have, and for us, Huddle didn't work well, so we, we take our outside, we take our outside of boosters and.
I know football really works, so I can see the other, go, go to the other team.
You, that night, you get the other team already that, like, you know, that night, we'll get, we'll get the other game next Friday, and, well, we'll get our, I mean, it all, um.
Cause I was probably watching it more than myself.
That's how we got all those offers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't, I don't like it. I know the first year when, well, the first year we got it was when, yeah, and, I couldn't have, it was like twenty-three, twenty-thirty maybe, thirty, thirty-five maybe? Yeah, I think so. Eight, ten thousand, twenty, twenty-two.
Yeah.
And it's what, ten, five, well?
It went, it went at five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's really, um, this is like a fourth year.
Yeah.
Actually, yeah, it was a good year. Hopefully, we can come up with something that'll, so then we'll be some money back. The NFHS is a way we get a little bit, maybe about twelve, fourteen hundred dollars back, maybe some when people watch it and sign up, and we get that kickback, and we get it, we get a check about every, I think, every quarter, so you get a little bit, but not much.
Any other questions on the bills? Any other discussion, any other discussion? You want to pay a little thing to the bills, please say aye. All opposed? Okay, the bills have been paid. All right, we'll move to the, um, first reports, and we'll start with our superintendent this long.
Um, I gave you guys an updated superintendent report, I added a couple of things, uh, since they initially went out. Uh, so instead of old schools and finalizing summer projects, um, over the last month or so, we've had a couple of incidents with having mice trapped in the building, uh, we set some traps on the perimeter to also alleviate the problem, um, I've checked in on Leucalya, they have been catching mice, so a good start there. Um, if those traps aren't sufficient to keep the rodents away, we'll look at potentially pest control contracts, if somebody will come and take care of that stuff for us. Um, elementary school boiler, the boiler inspection was done on August eleventh, uh, there's some, uh, drains on the bottom with worn threads, but in order for the, those drains to be repaired, uh, the asbestos needs to be rewrapped or removed. Um, it's not saying that those drains need to be repaired immediately, but in the near future, the next couple of years, more than likely. Um, high school coal boiler, junk patrol will be here to work on the auger for the coal boiler. Uh, I was talking with Tim today, and he said we might, might have to make a run to, I believe it's Center to grab parts to repair it. It's a fairly common fix, and we, he's pretty confident the Center has the parts there. Uh, the preschool lease agreement has been signed. Uh, the DPI drill down was held on Wednesday, August sixth in Bismarck, I attended that, and the superintendent boot camp was held on Thursday, August seventh, also in Bismarck. A lot of good information was passed on both of those days, we talked a lot about legislative changes and, and budget matters and that kind of thing as well. Um, our first NCEC board meeting will be held on Wednesday, September third in Minot, these will typically be held on the same day as Northwest Superintendent meetings in Minot as well. Teacher in-service will be held this Thursday and Friday here at Harvey High School, Thursday will include general information as well as training on class link, and Friday will cover primarily special education topics. Um, new administrator mentor program, we, we talked about this a little bit last month, but myself, Mr. Hass, Mr. Eric, who was able to participate in that mentorship program through NCEL. Health insurance, um, Dean, we have a meeting with that gal coming up?
Yeah, um, Mindy's coming to talk on Tuesday with me about it, and Erin, she may or may not be there, it's gonna be a first day.
First day.
Yeah, she's coming to talk, so if there's anything I need to pass along, I will. She's just gonna kind of explain our plan, we didn't talk here, she can chat with me.
So according to our, our estimate they gave us earlier in the year, um, it's roughly twenty-one, twenty-two percent increase on insurance rates with a grand total of roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase across the school district. Um, the electric bus is scheduled to show up tomorrow, Mr. Prom, is that correct? Um, and it'll be in service for a while. It'll be in service for a while, but once that part for the diesel heater arrives, it'll have to run back to Bismarck to get that installed. Um, guardrails passage, I, I was talking a little bit with Stu, um, and being this is the time of year we're at, and as much work as we've been putting into the budget, uh, she recommended moving that back to the September meeting, so that's what I would plan to focus on between now and then. Uh, the finalized budget we presented tonight for your approval. Staffing, our J-one teacher had his visa interview today, it could take more than ten days before he's actually in town, and I know Mr. Hass has been working on, shoring up a substitute to at least start, something to cover that. Lastly, I, I want to thank Dr. Robbie Lukens for kind of helping us with the budget a little bit. He came in a couple weeks ago, cause I didn't have a whole lot of familiar, familiarity with it. Um, he was, he was a tremendous asset to, to me that day. Um, I would recommend, obviously it's up to you guys, but I would recommend paying Dr. Lukens two hundred and fifty dollars as a gesture for his help and guidance throughout this entire budget process. It was, he spent a long day with us that day, and he was tremendously helpful, so I think that's the least we can do as a gesture of our appreciation.
Okay, what is your more wishes on the, on the recommendation of the report?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we give Dr. Robert Lukens two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, is there a second? If I move a second, if we pay him for his helping, Mr. Prom, discussion? Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor of a lot of, um, um, agreeing to pay him two hundred and fifty dollars as thanks, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, motion passed, we will pay him two hundred and fifty dollars. Any other questions, first one?
Um, towards a comment, but, um, on the, we use North Central Pest Control, they're reasonable, they're good.
Okay.
I don't think it's more.
And, you know, initially I thought, let's try to use some traps on our own and see if we can fix the problem, if not, we'll have to look elsewhere, I'm just hoping that would be a more cost-effective method of keeping the model.
Well, and I thought there was, because those, I missed those boxes, and I thought, I thought Harvey used to have a contract, so I reached out to a janitor, and she said that Equilab said just to use the sticky rat traps, which is curious, make, and Equilab doesn't want their job.
Well, right, and if there's random cats running around the building, you have any hours of the day, morning, night, speaking cats all over the place, which is a huge issue.
But North, North Central Pest Control, the guy who used to work for Equilab, was on the top of the road.
Cause you're kind of lucky with that, I wasn't with also that Equilab, and.
Yeah, so, yeah, along with that, things collect, they actually, at some point this summer, got into the kitchen area and chewed the power cord for the freezer, um, and there was a little bit of spoiled food in there as well, so we had to get rid of that freezer.
It's complicated, it's, I think I actually took it from that. It's like, oh, I didn't think so, that's why I'm so, why is this kind of thing now? Bad sign.
Okay, so, um, any more questions? Just go on. I would entertain a motion to accept this report. Please second. Stand in second, please. Uh, all in favor of accepting the two options, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and what's open, the second through twelve, please, so we just have. And to apologize for getting on this earth where you want to get, and everything else, and have registration to hide, and I get to work, I get to do the things, um, we're getting too many, uh, school registration in front of classes, uh, we don't have finalized numbers on our students, but we're allowed a hundred and ninety-nine students in grade seven to twelve this year, so a pledge of, from last year's time, so, um, but I will have a full report that's connected to me.
Most of them already?
Huh?
And most of them are registered, or?
Well, I have, uh, Mrs. Galvin and Ms. Freiber that have been helping with everything, I think we've only got the two kids left to register, and then our numbers kind of fluctuated in different classes, so we can strategically do some scheduling things, that also goes out, so you don't have thirty kids in class, so. I'll, I'll, I'm not even sure how that's on land. I have to guess we're about a hundred and thirty-nine, ten?
Did you say twelve a month?
Uh, the last time I checked, I had one ninety-nine, nine, seventy-four. Okay. But, we see, uh, we have a couple that have registered, um, we had a couple that moved out of the district that we got paperwork today, so, but, I don't have finalized numbers. Okay, any questions for? Yeah, I need the, the second report, uh, those two, the second is that?
I didn't.
Okay. Robbie seconds, Robbie seconds, okay? Robbie seconds? All in favor, please say aye. All right, so we'll move to number three, Mr. Ibrahim.
And July, the end of July, we attended the, um, Martin, Carter Lawrence, Martin Park activity, and our school was very well represented, um, both students and staff, we have some talented kids on there, that was very cool. Um, August fourth, we started our registration, we have, as of yesterday, we had about eighty families that were registered, we're still short of our two hundred and twenty-five that we're expecting, where we lost five students and we've already gained eight, so I'm hoping that will be up at that two twenty-five mark. Um, I'm guessing that, I'm, I'm glad that we started early, cause I guess it was a real mess last year, but, um, I'm guessing that a lot of them will bring in their paper workers or fill out their paperwork tomorrow night, so, um, I will be there to help Tammy with that. Um, staffing updates, I have, I've had six people come in to, to visit me, I'm out on the sub, so we have subs lined up. Emma Doctor is a student, she's going to be student teaching in the second semester, but she also has her sub license, so she can sub for us part-time, and then there's four or five, Kathy Kennedy, um, and some others that came in, uh, Sue Fall came in today and said she was willing to sub, so I have about six on my list that we can, that we can go dig through and call if we need to. Um, Susan Smies, Susan Smies will serve as cooperative teacher for April Mark, or she, she's coming, she's from animals, she's attending Wallen University in Minneapolis, and she's going to be, um, student teaching this first semester, so that'll, that'll help with our little kids too a little bit, and our teacher a little bit. And then Emma will student teach, um, with Taylor, um, second semester. Uh, we're starting with seven paraprofessionals, I have one that is out with maternity leave, um, don't know if that person's going to be returning, I haven't talked to her, she said she was, I'm not sure that I'm going to rely on that very, very much, but, um, well, Erin and I would like to have a conversation about, about paraprofessionals, we may have to have somebody for some IEP kids that have that in their IEP that need a full-time pair of, um, finding it's going to be the tricky part. And then, um, Dev Corrine, I don't know how's color agent, record agent, she's going to be twenty percent, um, helping our kindergarten teachers, we have a first-year kindergarten teacher and a second-year kindergarten teacher, so she'll spend eight hours a week just mentoring those two in the kindergarten classrooms. Um, Erin already mentioned the NCEC principal orientation and the, at the membership boot camp, uh, both Kelly and I went to that, uh, in-service is our schedule for tomorrow night, Friday night, um, or tomorrow, Friday, tomorrow night is our, um, get-together with the parents, back to school night, and then Trista's going to do, uh, from Creos, she's going to do all day on Friday. Yeah, kids come back in the nineteenth, we're excited about that, I've met a lot of kids already, a lot of parents already, and makes us to meet the rest. Caitlin Rennick will be here to check on the utilization records on August twenty-eighth, uh, parent teacher position, we've been invited to that on the twentieth, back to school, I talked about that. And then Erin talked about the boilers already, um, yeah, the, the, the school is very clean, very sharp, um, the teachers have been working hard, they got all their classrooms ready to go, um, we, we're planning a big, Michaela's planning, I thought I saw Michaela, is planning a big, uh, red carpet when the kids come on Tuesday morning, so we're going to have fun with that, and everybody's excited, we're good to go, ready to roll.
Yeah.
We have, um, you know, if, if we have one priority at our school, it would be, um, climate and culture, and, and I, I think that we were making some headway already in, in creating a climate that's comfortable for everyone, and, um, make everybody happy to come to work, or school, I call it school. That's it, that's all I got.
Awesome, anybody have a question, Bob? Good job, there's no questions. Awesome, okay, thank you, sir, without a motion to entertain, um, did you pause? We got questions?
No.
Oh, okay, there's a second. All right, probably move a second, and we accept the, uh, line of defense report, all favor, please say aye. Okay, move to the act of the question, Mr. Prom.
Uh, my report, I want to move that, purchase fees to next month, you know, get some more information, for other areas you're doing. Uh, I have on here, you know, football practice has started, volleyball will start during the camps, they add up thirty-one girls, which is great, um, football's rolling hard, fifth and sixth grade girls basketball, we are still in need of a girls' basketball coach, I may have one that left me a voicemail tonight, we'll see. Um, this trap league, that's something that's just in talk, and I just wanted it so that more members hear about it, it's, it's out there, it's not anything that the school does, this is kind of a league that's on the parents, and I talked with the head of the organization in Minnesota, and, um, it runs pretty seamless, they, they run it real well, uh, thing I, again, I like the best is it's on the parents, they give them to their needs, they do everything, they work with them, uh, the school's not, not even a fee, you know, it's not like one time payment, you know, but, girls golfing across country, we just kind of threw out looking for, for kids, we'll probably, if yours to come, we'll be so.
Do you still have a trap?
That's up.
Do they, do they still do their trapping?
Yeah, 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 we do. Milwaukee does. I always remember, yeah.
There was one from a conference that had been working kind of a state.
Well, that was, that was very, 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 very national.
That's where I thought I hit two.
There was two, there was two hundred and eighty thousand kids in the, oh, yeah, two hundred and eighty thousand kids in the United States out for trap last year, zero accidents.
I think might be up to two, okay?
I, I don't, I'm very hopeful.
I don't know what we got, but we, we did, we worked it out.
So, it's, it's, uh, you know, we've got a parent that really wants to run grass, so that's what's, that's what's out.
Okay?
Transportation side of things, the old activity bus, bus sixteen, that I, you know, we had it for sale, but we, we, so, I don't know what people want to do, we, we, uh, we did use it last year, and some people, I didn't know they all committed that one, but I'm just trying to take, I don't know what, I mean, it's, it works, but it was working, it was working well with Kelly test, too, and, and, so, I, you know, I think you guys should think about what, what, uh, you know, if you want to put it on a consignment auction and get what we get, or just what we want to do with it.
How much is the insurance cost to try?
Uh, just, just do Bismarck. So, I hope we just keep out there, there is, we can do it again, yeah.
Yeah.
We had our bus driver meeting today, sure was not the way I thought it was going to be last spring, but we have drivers, we're, we're good shape of drivers, so, um, we've got, we'll have the routes all figured out, everybody, had a base, really waiting, I guess through Friday, through registration, making sure we got the news, perhaps, uh, four.
Yeah.
Which last year we started with three, and we'll be able to keep it four.
You have four routes, and you have how many drivers?
Five.
Five.
Five, that will be part of that.
Let's say we're okay.
Yeah, and then, uh, plus a real full-time sub, you know, so, yeah, certainly, and then, uh, I sent you guys an email about going to the Eagles to talk to them about a need for a trailer, um, with this new bus, we don't have any under-seat storage under bus like we did on the other one, and so we were, we got by with a five-by-eight trailer that we towed, and, um, we're going to go see if we can get a seven-by-fourteen, uh, panel mass or trailer for the Eagles, and, uh, Eagles are, and, uh, see what we can do, cause otherwise, uh, our situation would be two buses, so.
Yeah, okay. Anybody got a question, or is it wrong?
Yeah, cause all I did, I just sent an article, a email to all board members.
Right.
Yeah.
To, 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 to.
Right.
Okay, what's that, the motion?
Yeah, I'm hoping they allow my, well, that's my question, probably support a trailer from Eagles.
Is there a second? Okay, Brian, move a second, that we let Mr. Prom go, and, um, we're, we're talking to his chair, um, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any more discussion, and all in favor of allowing Mr. Prom to go, and, uh, if we can, if it, if, if, please say aye. Okay?
I do have a question.
Yeah?
What's the status for a moment?
Um, I should have, you may have two coaches.
Yay.
Yeah, I should have asked the, uh, I did not ask the, I was thinking about bus jobs this morning, I did have to ask you, you guys do it.
Oh, really?
And then there's a person that says you have to be interested, so where we have, there again, we have, generally, no, we may have two.
Yeah, that's obvious. Okay, um, any more questions for Mr. Prom? Uh, I, I entertain a motion. Okay, okay, probably move a second, if we, uh, accept Mr. Prom's report, all favor, please say aye. Stand, opposed, motion, uh, okay, now we will go to the budget. I'm not Mr. Prom, Tom, you get off. Let Mr. Prom talk, get on your budget.
So, been working on this for a few weeks now. Kind of be very meticulous going line by line, code by code, then, then going through it as well. You know, I presented a budget to you guys a couple weeks ago at our special board meeting. Our number was pretty substantial, that we had been spending in the red. Through there, or since then, we've really been going through it, looking for any discrepancies or any code errors, et cetera. After going through it very meticulously, we got that, that number down. If you look on the very back page. The fund one budget balance, I reduced by, by about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Should be looking at this page here.
Yeah.
Got it. So a couple weeks ago, that was about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand higher.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then when you, when you look at this, it's off about the hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollar raise.
Yeah, and cost. Hundred percent.
Isn't that in here?
Yeah, so if, let's go back to the previous page, it looks, starts like this, it's actually two-sided. It's the budget expenditures and comparisons comparing last year to this year. And you can see the change percentage-wise and dollar-wise from twenty-four, twenty-five to our projected twenty-five, twenty-six. You can see, if you start up on the, one of the top lines, you can see professional salary actually went down a little bit there. Non-certified salary went up quite a bit, dollars-wise, simply because we have some teachers still going through the parent teacher program that are working with cooperative teachers. Uh, we could keep going down that group insurance under benefits. You can see the change of, the projected change of a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollar increase. Um, continuing down, professional ed services, that's where you're gonna see the biggest percentage jump. And if you look at professional ed services, that actually jumps up a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. And a bulk of that number can be attributed to our speech-language pathology contract that was present in June. Yes, for sure. No, operational services went down a little bit, hopefully that stays where it's at. Purchase services went up by eight percent, which isn't terrible. Looking over to the back page, looking at supplies and materials, that went up by twenty-two percent, simply because of inflation for the most part. We've upped our repair parts and assembly budgets simply for the what-if scenarios with the building and the boiler and that kind of thing. Property didn't, didn't change much, other objects. Wouldn't increase by ninety-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Dues and fees went up, a lot of that can be attributed to the mentorship program that Mr. Every, Mr. Hasbain, and myself are going through. Uh, so at the bottom with the total, you'll see a increase of approximately four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. And expected expenditures with a six-point-eight percent overall budget increase from twenty-four, twenty-five. So you take those numbers, the projected twenty-five, twenty-six total. And going back to that back page with their total fund one, six million, four-hundred-and-thirty thousand, that's where that number of one fifty-two, one forty-five shows.
That twenty-four, twenty-five, I was thinking, is that what was budgeted last year or what was spent last year?
That, I believe that it was what was spent. McDonald saying that thing?
You know, I don't, I'm one million percent, but I would think you would be. Because, because the, this, this, I don't wanna say this wrong, but this, this sheet here.
Right, you would've had to.
You would've had to go through an update, most, or I believe it would be what they budgeted for.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, yeah, right, too, you look at the stuff and you go down, like.
Electricity.
You know, we're not spending right on the job, five thousand, six hundred, nine thousand. I, I know, 'cause last year, I remember, uh, probably about ninety thousand, 'cause we bought that bus, so, yeah. Well, you didn't know what, yeah, hold on, I was, I was processing it. On your due period expenditure, it shows you exactly what was spent. It's more like in the same year, probably, yeah, for the. Oh, oh, you're trying to see like what we budgeted, what we, it's also on an expenditure. It shows on expenditure, see what we spent and how much we have, yeah. So you can easily see that, yeah. And if you have any questions, I'll just come and talk.
I must say, Eddie Aaron spent a lot of hours on this, going through line by line, and everything that, you know, the, then checking out, making sure all of the, to get that in the book, all of the salaries and, you know, and claims and usual experience and all that and codes. Found a few different things that, something that, you know, listed in here or not in here, whatever.
And other things just to, to consider, we do have a few positions, specifically, they're, right now, they're open, including one or two custodial positions and potentially a pair position. They're budgeted in there, and their total cost for those two or three combined is around a thousand dollars.
Oh, we do have spare, a spare position or two, and the custodial position or two that are, they're, they're placeholders.
Yes, a hundred percent.
Yeah, if I, hopefully, if you get lucky enough, one of these, you know, one of them yourself, we do kind of get some of them.
Cause we're still a straight customer?
Yes.
Um, I can't go with possible for models to live here?
Oh, you're talking specifically under activities?
Yeah, that would be.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. When was that added, just out of my own curiosity?
That was just in May, June, December.
May, question?
Okay, so I need information on that as far as what the contract and stuff says about, about being added to it.
I, I.
All right, to be honest with you, I didn't even know.
We're just starting, yeah.
Let's have a, um, how about I entertain a motion to approve business budget that we can discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, for second? Okay, so I can dance, I probably move to approve the budget that Aaron has developed for twenty-five, twenty-six. Now let's discuss any specific items or ask any specific questions you have.
And then I see now with the mills, too.
Yeah, so we did, so the mills that I have plugged in there. Visited with the county auditor, we talked about how our mills are capped at a three percent increase dollars-wise, which equates still a little over sixty thousand dollars. And we were looking at where we were last year, and just making that in total, three percent increase across all of our mills. And then we kind of sat down and discussed priorities with the building, knowing where our building fund is sitting. And I didn't wanna do a huge change to that one, but at the same time, I thought it would be prudent to increase our miscellaneous fund a little bit as well. So I took a little bit off the building fund and added that to the miscellaneous fund dollars and cents wise, it was zero, no change. Uh, but it allotted an extra one-and-a-half mills to miscellaneous fund, um, just. For a little bit of peace of mind in my vision, so.
Right, I, okay, if you could have a potential, potential here.
Yeah. And then realistically, a person could, could've left building fund where it sat, that, at that mill, and done that whole increase on miscellaneous fund. I always wanna think of the what-if.
Because if you even have to, you know, if you run boiler, that, I feel this one would be gone.
But miscellaneous could go up to ten.
Um, miscellaneous could go to ten-point-seven-five. Yeah, I took a one-and-a-half mills off the building fund and added one-and-a-half to the miscellaneous. And obviously, those aren't set, so we just, yeah.
So what about the last year, like that's no increase that last year's mills are?
Those, these are adjusted, they're not set yet, but these, we haven't approved them yet. So realistically, I can take that miscellaneous fund if I subtracted one-and-a-half, they would've been back, that was at seven-point-seven-five.
Oh, okay.
Building fund would've been at, like, four-point-oh, I think it was four-point-oh-five or four-point-oh-seven.
Didn't tell me how to define it, okay?
Nope. So we did get all the taxable evaluations from Pierce, Sheridan, and Wells County. Still, from my, from my knowledge, I haven't received one from Benson County. Been talking with both Pierce and Sheridan counties, their taxable evaluations actually went down, and Wells County's went up a little bit, and they essentially offset one another. And for the sake of this budget, since I hadn't heard back from Benson County, we just kept the number at Wells County. That might fluctuate a little bit.
Anyone special?
Technically, we're gonna raise a little bit. It'll be a slight bump of an allowable three percent, like it's tenths of a mill, if that makes sense. Yeah, in grand total, it'll be a little over sixty thousand dollars across the entire district. And that's all you're gonna, three percent cap, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion?
And actually, this is just more of an informational thing than anything else. I, I learned this over the last couple of weeks. Harvey's building fund was capped at ten mills in nineteen sixty-seven. And that was in part of a bond that we have believed to go to this building project. The actual state cap that doesn't have that stipulation in place is twenty. We'd actually have to go to a bond referendum hearing and have the vote go up and change that law.
Okay, give us a, any more discussion? More discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor of accepting?
Okay, thank you, let's say that one, please. I know the WLC is behind the scenes, saying the ups and downs, but I don't think that he's, he's not a witness. I just want everybody to, to know that this is who Mr. Drake is having, because, actually, the ups and downs, it's not easy for somebody new to come in. He doesn't need praise, he didn't ask for the praise, but for him to come in and talk, and I don't know, imperating it was a person, and how he's gonna be like, whoop, whoop it out. But, but he, he's taking it on, and Robbie did come help that day, provided tremendous support from them after the fact, during the fact after the fact. I see how much he works on it every day, he shaved off hundreds, well, he shaved off hundreds of thousands, I see. And nobody really sees the behind-the-scenes stuff, so I just want you guys to know that seeing that every day, he's done a heck of a deal, you gotta be grateful for that. I just want that to be on the record.
When I asked the, oh, question, and it was a moment, and I woke up thinking about this number and that number, and I thought, yep, he sounds like you're asking about.
I know, I.
He tried to get raised.
I just, I felt like it was necessary, I wanted to say something. Just give him a little praise, so that he, 'cause you guys don't see the behind-the-scenes, I just want you to know all of it. It's been, it's been awesome to watch, especially, you know, maybe would be a little different if he was a fifteen-year batter, he's got fifteen years. But to come in like that and look great and, anyway, that's just like, just, just trying to give you some insight, just be proud. Thank you.
Again, a call for discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor of accepting the Harvey Public School twenty-five, twenty-six budget as follows, five, Mr. Prom, please say aye. All opposed? Motion naturally carries, and the budget is accepted. Again, thank you for your, your, okay, so now we will go, item two, fair professional pay, you want?
So this is brought up in July, had a fair professional, um, that brought it to ding, ding to my attention that, um, they were offered a higher rate of pay mid-school year last year. Dan and I couldn't find any documentation on it, I visited with Dr. Lutens about the same topic, and he doesn't have any recollection of having that conversation whatsoever. Um, I just wanted to, I wanted you guys to be aware that since we have no documentation and the old support suggests otherwise, that we will be able to honor the, the raise that was brought to our attention. Unless you guys feel otherwise.
I'm confident we have two gentlemen that are undocumented, thank you, and we'll just, we'll just go to the here, so. I think we can do a lot, right? All right, so is everyone move on to opening a bid, you have any bids to open up?
Yeah, I do. We've got two, very familiar. First one is coal in general, from, from center, of course, and their price to supply was sulfur coal from the BNI mine center, oh, BNI mine in center North Dakota. Is forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents a ton for coal. So again, the price to supply us with sulfur coal from the BNI mines in center North Dakota is forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents per ton. And this is our only bid for this, okay?
I always think about that, too, and I can't remember what it was last.
It was forty-eight.
Was, yeah, I have it for that, I remember that one from last year, but, yeah.
Been looking just at their website.
Yeah, it's the only one we have.
Okay, so make a motion to accept the bid? Is there a second? Thirty seconds, okay, is it probably? Uh, I've, I've, can you say that number to me one more time?
Forty-eight, one, seven, five.
Forty-eight, seventy-five.
Per ton.
Per ton. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of accepting that cool bid at forty-eight, seventy-five a ton, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, that will be the bid then, that will accept that bid. Okay, coal hauling from McThompson, he would like to bid the coal hauling from Centrical to Harvey Schools at forty-one dollars and fifty cents per ton. Again, McThompson would like to bid the coal hauling from Centrical to HBS at forty-one dollars and fifty cents per ton. Okay? And it will, now, is there any bid?
I'll make a motion to accept that bid.
Okay? Okay, move to the second, that was Chuck McThompson bid at forty-one, fifty? Ah, yeah, any discussion? Discussion, discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please, yeah. Okay, motion passed, we'll accept McThompson's bid, all right. Then we're gonna go to the employee personnel handbook, second reading. First, let me entertain a motion to accept the second reading, never to discuss it.
First, let me understand a motion to accept the second reading, never to discuss it.
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading of the employee personal.
Okay, is there a second? And that's the second? Okay, I'll be moving second, if we accept the employer, employee, player handbook, second reading, any discussion?
I see all the dates, everything was changed, is it, so we use this format or?
Just so it was easier to, because the last format was unknown.
Right.
So, now it's on a Word document, so we can edit it as needed.
Right, but we got.
Some of the odd spacings, and are you talking about?
Well, last time, we had gotten this one, I think that you had got up, and then this time, now we got this one. Kind of like the old format.
Yeah.
But all the information, the dates and everything that we talked last time were changed, I just didn't know which format you guys liked. I thought we were going to.
It's entirely possible I was going to go wrong.
I mean, it all, the wording is the same, and you changed everything, but the per diem were changed, the dates were changed, I just, towards that one, you have, you have sixteen. This year, that one we got tonight?
No. The one that we packed and had sixteen, I don't think that one, uh.
No, it didn't, but that, but I mean, the changes that we talked about, according to like the new, for, for, yeah, they are in this one. I just didn't know, and I, the date was changed, because there was a date change of February, Friday, February fifteenth, that was all changed.
Yeah, this is, we, 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 we.
So, and, and like all these other things that we talked about, twelve months, they're commonplace, they are in here, but I just didn't know what that.
The per diem was changed from that, like, the last thing we talked about.
Right. So, it's whatever, I just thought we'll be using this format, and you know, whatever, but you can get that, the wording is all corrected, yeah. So, all we would have to do is just change everything and.
Well, no, I, I think I may have just uploaded the.
Right, you made the changes, right.
But I think what I, what I can and will do
Yeah.
is take the updated one that Mr. Everie worked on, make sure all the verbiage from this one matches the verbiage on that one, because even looking at this one, this is going to be more user-friendly to go through then.
Right, yeah, and you did have everything highlighted last time, so, yeah, I, I was just, I'm fine to see a way to change this, but, yeah, if we could use this format, I think it would be easier.
And then just fix the revise, would you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, that will go on, then, I have to, yeah. That was my only question, otherwise, I see you made all the changes, so.
Okay? Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
Um, what was the grade?
Wednesday, Wednesday. Because even the one we got here. Okay. Yeah, I think the other one said right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the other, the old one said Tuesday, and so he does have, all the changes are in here, it's just that.
I picked the wrong one to change.
Yeah, that's all, but, I mean, you did make the changes to the old one, it's just that, yeah, but, yeah, just change the new format, and you're good.
Okay, no problem.
All right, again, any discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor of the second reading and passing the employee personal handbook, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, okay, and now go to the waitroom fogs.
Um, so the, we discussed a little bit about waitroom fogs, and I think Mr. Hassan, Mr. Prom, you can maybe help out a little bit with this, if you don't mind. Just wanted to make sure that we had appropriate guidelines in place to make sure that the people who are given waitroom fogs used appropriately, and they meet certain criteria to go along with that. Including a one-time fog, the minimum age to be in there, ages that would require an adult, or ages that would require an additional person present. Fog would be returned in, would be turned in prior to graduation, unless requesting to extend. Uh, that fog would be free, or that waitroom would be free to use for a period of four years to the end of the high school career, I believe.
Right.
Collegiate career.
Well, and Mike and I talked about that, instead of worrying about the collegiate career, if we just say for a period of four years or administrative discretion, then if somebody comes in, like, I'm training at Morey State, I'm home for the summer, Mike or I or Mr. Prom have the ability to, yep, we'll approve you for this summer, because we know that you're on the roster. Because if a kid goes and we think they're a collegiate athlete, and they quit after their second year, they could have that fog. It's hard to keep up in the summer when we're not here.
So, that, when they say a period of four years or?
Or by administrative discretion. Any other questions or?
Do we have the age? Yeah, the only other, one thing we want to add on there is, um, fogs are available with grade, students in grades nine and. So, we limited to that, nine criteria. I'm just, you have a motion to accept this one? Are we making a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept this.
Put the changes?
Put the changes, yeah.
Do a second? Okay, I'll be moving second, then we accept this, put the changes, we just discussed, any discussion? Any discussions? Okay, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all ones in favor of that, we said. Okay. All right, so the next thing we have, we're knocking off the preschool register, so then we have the student course enrollment, this is, um, recently been on the agenda here, so they get together and express their opinion, and I guess, um, I wanted to just say, I'm not going to sit time, you both are going to come, limit you to five minutes, so go ahead and make your point, and then we'll, um, and we'll, um, discuss.
In two thirty time, would we request formal approval of Wyatt's graduation plan? Over there, we believe we've already capped the line of the school's goals and Harvey High School district policy. Wyatt has attended Harvey School since preschool. His goal is to graduate with his class, however, without approval of the proposed plan, he will complete his diploma through NBCDE, attending only A classes in person to remain active in NEFA, where he serves as an officer. Remaining in the district and graduating with his class is Wyatt's clear preference. The plan reflects the district's mission to offer lifelong meaningful learning and the vision of helping all students achieve academic and personal success. The twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six strategy map emphasizes instructional innovation, student empowerment, and career readiness, all values Wyatt's plan supports. His course overview for his senior year is eleven classes in total with eight credits. In Harvey High School, he will be attending AIGMAC, COOP, POD, PE, and cyber security. Dual credit is English one-ten and Econ two-oh-one, both of which he's completed this summer. COM one-ten and Intro to Computers, which he is scheduled and registered for this fall. Um, in order to do his six credits in school, Mr. Dr. Lukens had suggested NBCD, looking at NBCDE, and we have a placeholder for Vet Science this fall, Principles of AIG this spring. This schedule exceeds the district's sixth-class minimum and includes high school dual credit and state credited distance learning, fully meaning graduation and post-secondary readiness standards. We also have legal backing from the state, NBCC fifteen allows substitution with college-level classes, and permits the use of distance education and college enrollment. HB twelve-hundred requires.